You're watching JaxPBS More, WJCT Jacksonville.
The School Board of Duval County School District is now convening its regular monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. Division Statement of this Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The Mission Statement of the Duval County School Board is to provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day. The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the Board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the School Board to make managerial or operational decisions. The Board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the Board meets in an Agenda Committee meeting prior to the Board meeting for an in-depth review of all Agenda items. The committee meeting for February 1st, 2022 will be held on January 18th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the Board during our public comments portion of the Board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. The CDC currently recommends that everyone two years of age or older who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask in indoor spaces. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Board members, I invite you to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our school presentations from District 4, Springfield Middle School. Let's give a round of applause as Springfield Middle approaches.
Good evening, and first of all, thank you for inviting us this evening, Board Member Willie. I am DeShawn Bush. I am the principal at Springfield Middle School. And we do have a video presentation tonight, but just a couple of words about our wonderful school. We are the premier dedicated magnet school for math, science, and technology located in historic Springfield, very close to downtown Jacksonville. We serve 6th through 8th grade students, and we, the magnet window is open, and we invite all of our rising 5th graders to put in their magnet application and make Springfield their first choice. We have our first face-to-face tour tomorrow morning at 8:45. We invite parents to visit our website to see our, the rest of our tour dates, and see all the things that we have to offer, starting with this video.
The thing that makes Springfield Middle School so amazing is really the teachers, the staff, the students, and parents. It's our school community.
I think Springfield is a great school because we offer our students a lot of variety and the experiences they can choose here. From academic career to technical exposure, they get to sample a lot of things.
A CEEEM education includes exposure in a variety of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math disciplines. So students can learn, for example, in technology and science, computer science, from coding to information systems to robotics. And they're integrated together so that students have the best opportunity to get full exposure and learn a lot about all of this.
So in 6th grade, our students are going to take coding, and here they want to take design and modeling. Our 7th graders are going to take digital discovery, and our 8th graders have an opportunity to take information and communication technology course, or like the kind of advanced information technology course.
I think Springfield Middle School is definitely good with their different clubs they have.
Springfield, it has stuff for everybody. You can be included in everything. I personally, I play a lot of sports, I play softball, and I like to have spring, fall, and winter sports. And it's like above everybody, and all the teachers are very understanding.
Our academic programs are tailored to the individual students and their needs.
Our teachers and staff are special because they're caring. They're caring, they're dedicated. They do have high expectations, but they are the kind of people who help kids reach those expectations. They're going to do everything they can to make sure that our kids are where they need to be.
And all teachers really want to learn, not just have us immerse them, but to really understand how deep and knowledgeable the subject is.
Of course, you know, we're really excited about our programs, our project, the EDP program. We're excited about our technology, innovation, all of the great staff here. But the school community is the one who steps all that together. If I'm a parent, I have a student who has an interest in technology and science, and I'm looking for a school of the people who care about our students, and they will be the new leader for Springfield.
Wow. So if you did not know, Springfield is one of the schools that I represent, and each of us get an opportunity to have one. And I was excited to be able to bring you and as a representative of that school and that school community. Amazing things happening, awesome video. I think it really showcases what it's, what it's all about. And you as a leader, I think you just do a wonderful job. So can we give it up for Springfield Middle School one more time? And Principal Bush?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. At this time, Ms. Vicky Pierre will begin our presentations for this evening.
Tonight, we begin by recognizing a school counselor honored for his outstanding dedication to the all-around well-being of his students. Joshua Nelson of Richard L. Brown Gifted and Talented Academy received the Distinction of School Counselor of the Year from the Florida School Counselor Association, or FSCA. According to the FSCA, the School Counselor of the Year Award honors the best of the best, counselors who are running a top-notch, comprehensive school counseling program at either the elementary, middle, or high school level. Mr. Nelson believes the key component to understanding students is realizing that each student can learn and achieve, even if it's not the same way or even the same day as his or her peers. Knowing that each student has a story and that it's vital to learn the story of the student, Mr. Nelson says he focuses on social-emotional learning. He also builds relationships on all levels to create rapport. This includes hosting lunch or brunch chats, playing catch, and learning every child's name and at least one personal thing about them at the beginning of the year. He also works to communicate the needs of students with teachers and administration, all in order to foster better advocacy for student life and behavioral support. In view of this honor, Nelson is also receiving a Superintendent's Coin of Excellence from Dr. Green, and he's joined this evening by our Brown Principal, Kristy Kincaid. Please join us in congratulating Nelson as Florida School Counselor Association Counselor of the Year. The FSCA not only recognizes outstanding counselors, but the association also honors administrators who demonstrate exemplary support of school counseling programs. Our next honoree, Beaux-Aire Elementary School Principal Erin O'Matt Walker, received the association's School Counselor Advocate Administrator Award for his support toward his counseling staff. Administrators play a crucial role in the success of counselors, students, and staff. They influence the dynamics of the relationship between a student and their counselor, along with the counselor's ability to efficiently advocate for their student population. Principal Walker believes that, quote, "Counselors have a unique perspective when approaching education that can often be overlooked. Counselors approach education as supporting each child, while administration is responsible for approaching education in support of all children." He says keeping an open mind and combining both philosophies allows for successful education of the whole child. Just to name some of what he does to support his two school counselors, he hosts a bi-weekly meeting called Leadership Plus that includes counselors in on the conversation to discuss solutions for assisting the most fragile learners. He also works to ensure that counselors have the resources and aid needed to tackle situations that limit the inspiration of students. Tonight, he also receives a Coin of Excellence from Dr. Green. Please help us congratulate Principal Walker on his recognition as a Top School Counselor Advocate Administrator. While learning a second language can seem scary, this next teacher has excelled in helping countless students conquer and overcome those fears. We now recognize Claudia Elliott, a Spanish teacher at Paxton School for Advanced Studies, and the 2021 Florida Foreign Language Association Teacher of the Year. Born in Columbia, Mrs. Elliott uses her background as a foundation to use culture to make an impact on her students. In recent years, she was, she has implemented changes to her teaching practices to make her class more comprehensible, communicative, and community-driven. She says, quote, "I understand how slow and difficult the journey to learn a second language is, and I also know that there is not a finish line," which is why she has high realistic expectations for her students. To her, language is about social communication, which requires building trust and vulnerability. This is done in many ways, but through one activity she calls Calendar Talk, students foster relationships by sharing what they're doing that week through sports, classes, social events, and more. Tonight, Elliott is also receiving a Superintendent's Coin of Excellence from Dr. Green. Please join us in congratulating her on receiving Florida Foreign Language Association Teacher of the Year. We now move on to the recognition of 30 Team Duval Schools. Whether they're elementary, middle, or high school, they have one thing in common, and that's excellence. To be more specific, they've each earned School of Excellence status from the Florida, the Florida State Board of Education for the 2020-21 school year. To be named a School of Excellence, a school must rank in the 80th percentile of the possible percentage points earned in its school-grade calculation for at least two of the last three school years. Tonight, we're recognizing these schools one by one and representing them with beautiful banners, as you can see in front of you. So we begin with Alma Connie Elementary School, represented this evening by Principal Catherine Stalls. Congratulations. Up next is Atlantic Beach Elementary School, and we're joined by Principal Kimberly Gallagher. Congratulations. Next, we have Bartram Springs Elementary School, and with us is Principal Kimberly Wright. Congratulations. Our next school is Biscayne Elementary, and we're joined by Principal Siney McBride. Congratulations. Next, we have Chet's Creek Elementary School, represented tonight by Principal Susan Phillips. Congratulations. And now we welcome Chimney Lakes Elementary and Principal Bill Gilli. Congratulations to Chimney Lakes. Next, we have Darnell Cookman School of the Medical Arts, and on behalf of the school is Assistant Principal Osama Zarkaria. Congratulations. Next, we have Dinsmore Elementary School, and here with us is Principal Wanda Reese. Congratulations to Dinsmore Elementary. Next is Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, and we are joined by Principal Tina Wilson. Congratulations. Next, we have Fishwear Elementary School, and with us is Principal Kimberly Dennis. Congratulations. Next, we have Fletcher Middle School, and with us this evening is Principal Joseph McKenzie. Congratulations. Next, we have Hendrix Avenue Elementary School and Principal Darrell Edmonds. Congratulations. We now wish to recognize Hogan Spring Glen Elementary School, and we're joined by Principal Robin White. Congratulations. We now have Jay Allen Axon Montessori, and we're joined by Principal Cecilia Robinson Van Hooi. Congratulations. Next, we have James Weldon Johnson College Preparatory, and representing the school is Principal Jay Stuckey. Congratulations. Congratulations to Jacksonville Beach Elementary School, and we're joined by Principal Cameron Mattingly. Congratulations. Next, we have John Stockton Elementary School, and with us is Principal Stephanie Brannon. Congratulations. Next is Julia Landen College Preparatory, and this evening we're joined by Kristy Putnall. Congratulations. Next, we congratulate Kernan Trail Elementary, and representing the school this evening is Principal Susan Shaw. Congratulations. Next, we have Lavilla School of the Arts. Unfortunately, the principal could not join us this evening, but we congratulate Lavilla. Next is Mandarin Oaks Elementary School, and representing the school is Principal Lee Butterfield. Congratulations. Next is Neptune Beach Elementary, and here from the school is Principal Elizabeth Kavanaugh. Congratulations. Next is New Berlin Elementary, and representing the school this evening is Principal Crystal Lewis. Congratulations. Congratulations to Paxton School for Advanced Studies with Principal Royce Turner. Congratulations. Now we welcome Sable Palm Elementary School and Principal Linda Graham. Congratulations. Next is San Pablo Elementary School, and here with us is Principal Jennifer Brown. Congratulations. And now for Sandalwood High School, and we are joined by Principal Dr. Sarah Hatcher. Congratulations. Next, we have Seabreeze Elementary School, and we are joined tonight by Principal Amy Kimball. Congratulations. We now have Springfield Middle School, and here on behalf of the school is Principal DeShawn Bush. Congratulations. And for our final school, we recognize Stanton College Preparatory, and on behalf of the school this evening is Assistant Principal Michael Kerr. Congratulations. Onto our next presentation. They went for the gold, and they got it. For our next presentation, we honor three Team Duval athletes with state championship status in swimming and in diving. There's Stanton's Riley Darkash, Class 2A State Diving Champion, Ed White's Elisha Dees, Class 2A Stant Champion in Boys Diving, and Mandarin High School's Gage Holbert, Class 4A Stant Champion in the 100 Fly. They each participated in the Florida High School Athletic Association Swimming and Diving State Championships last November. In Riley's case, this is her second consecutive state win. Her coach calls her an outstanding, driven student athlete who is a team leader. By the way, Riley is currently up for the Greater Jacksonville Sports Awards. By the way, Riley is currently up for the Greater Jacksonville Sports Award, one of the top honors that can be awarded to high school swimmers and divers in the region. Elisha Dees is Ed White's first ever boys aquatic champion within his class and we've also been told the projected valedictorian. Even though the senior has earned many accolades as a swimmer, this is his first gold or state championship, a goal he set for himself as a freshman to achieve before graduating. Finally, Gage Holbert tells us that he performed his two personal best times for the 100 Fly in the state championship. This was his first state win and especially meaningful because his coach is retiring this year. According to the Florida Times-Union, he's only the third Mandarin boy swimmer to ever win a state boy swimming title. Tonight, all three students are receiving a superintendent's coin of excellence. Tonight, Riley is joined by Stanton Swim Coach Robert Fleming and Athletic Director Chris Kreider. Elisha is joined by Ed White Swim Coach Zachary Taylor, Athletic Director Matthew Buckley, and Principal Baptiste. And finally, representing Gage is Principal Sarah Bravo and Coach Mike Dingfield and Director Brian Radho. And we're also joined by District Athletic Director Tammy Tally. Please help us congratulate these three athletes for their championship wins.
Great job, guys.
And now for a creative solution to help students address mental health concerns. We now wish to welcome Betty Burney, Founder and Executive Director of I'm a Star Foundation, for a brief presentation.
Good evening. To Board Chairman Willie, to Board Vice Chair Dr. Kelly Coker-Daniels, to our distinguished board, and to our wonderful Superintendent Dr. Diana Green. The student leaders in the I'm a Star Foundation for the past two years have been concerned and been working on what they considered to be severe mental health issues that have been related into young people with regards to their mental health issues because of the pandemic. And they decided that they needed to do something about it. They've worked diligently and they've been hard pressed to do some things. They decided back in 2021 that they were going to create toolkits. And those toolkits would be something that they would give to young people who were experiencing mental health in Duval County Public Schools just as a way to let their peers know that there were some other young people who cared about them. When I told them that they could do it, what I did not realize, Dr. Green, was that that costs money. And if we were going to be providing all of these young people with toolkits, we needed some money. And the only reason that I'm speaking tonight, and they will come up in a few seconds, is because I just would like to say that two of my former board chair members, who are now city council people and one is deceased, Board Member, I'm sorry, City Councilwoman Tommy Hazuri and City Councilwoman Brenda Priestley Jackson, decided with their money that they were receiving for COVID that they were going to give it to the I'm a Star Foundation. And because they understand what takes place with children and because they wanted to make sure that we were able to do some things, they provided us with the funds that we would need to make sure that we could mass produce these toolkits for young people. So with that being said, I'm very thankful for them. We also, the Florida Times-Union, has been a great partner with us, letting us host conversations. And we've had former Chairwoman Anderson on with us, Dr. Diana Green, Daryl Willie, Dr. Kelly Coker-Daniels have come on these podcasts and community conversations with us. We also have Ms. Marsha Pleasure, who's the editor of Florida Times-Union, who's with us tonight because she helped these young people see their vision through. And so I'm going to now turn it over to them.
Good evening. To the members of the Duval County School Ward and Superintendent Diana Green. My name is Kennedy Larkins and I am a star. A smart, talented, and resilient student destined to change the world. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an enormous impact on the world in general. But more specifically, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a devastating impact on the mental health of school-aged children. My generation has lived through the pain of family members, friends, teachers, and hundreds of thousands of people dying from a disease that came upon us suddenly and turned our world upside down. We were in isolation and had to change the way we receive our education for an entire year. When I was in 7th grade, Ms. Burney gave my group, which is the Leader-to-Later Group, the task of selecting four areas that were impacting our students. We wanted to focus for our 2020 Leader-to-Later Summit. One of our areas we decided to focus on was mental health. Because as students, we knew that we were scared and needed help. December 2020, we also held our Leader-to-Later Summit. I facilitated the session and thankfully I had Ms. Katrina Taylor from the school district and NFL Hall of Famer member Brian Dawkins in my session. They were tremendous. We also had the editor of the Florida Times-Union, Ms. Mary Kelly Parker, sitting in on our session. She asked us what we wanted and we said we needed a chance for our voices to be heard so we could sound the alarm and make a difference for our peers. Ms. Parker kept her promise and the Florida Times-Union has partnered with us to host community conversations to educate and empower the community about COVID-19 vaccines and especially about youth mental health. We would also like to give her an Empower Me toolkit tonight.
The I'm a Star Foundation teaches us that we are solution-oriented students who can make a difference in the world. Ms. Burney is constantly reminding us that the essence of leadership is a service to mankind. And since November 2020, we I'm a Star students have been working incredibly hard for an entire year. And for the entire year of 2021, we have put in a continuous effort for the Empower Me series to get up and running. We believe that when given the right tools and resources and when given the opportunity for our voices to be heard, children and teens of all ages can become a force to be reckoned with. They will be empowered to believe that they can go beyond their circumstances and rise much to much higher levels. And we really believe this from the bottom of our hearts. So we have students working on an Empower Me app, podcast, and YouTube channel that will help students like them become emotionally and physically stronger. We want students' self-confidence and self-esteem to grow when they use our apps. And with Grace and Favorite, our first segment will be coming up in two weeks, so be on the lookout. Because we're virtual, I'm a Star students have also come from cities to engage with us. So I would like to give a huge shout out to our teammate Trinity Burney from North Carolina, who has been working with us since 2020. My colleague Cameron Dees will tell you about the Empower Me kit tools.
Good evening, everyone. As Ashley stated, my name is Cameron Dees and I would like to share with you what is in our toolkit. First of all, these toolkits were created and designed by us. The adults just purchased the items that we asked to be included. We were very intentional about what we wanted to be included in this toolkit. Now, the box is turquoise for a reason. When Mrs. Burney tells the I'm a Star students to take it to the turquoise, that means we are to go beyond where we think we can reach and that we have to come from a spirit of excellence. When they open the box, there's a QR code on the inside flap. When they access the QR code, it takes them to a very special video message from my colleagues and I, letting them know that we are not alone. They need to know that they have a village and all of us are a part of their village. The kit contains a blessings jar and it lets them know that these are good vibes in this jar. They pick out a blessing each day and write their thoughts in a journal. Mrs. Taylor and Brian Dawkins talked about the importance of journaling. See, Mrs. Taylor, we weren't listening. The journal has a list of resources in the inside flap and there's a pen inside that has a motivational message. When we give them their journal, they have to write 30 entries so they can contact us and we will give them a reward. We also have a motivational wristband to remind them daily to be empowered. The kit also contains a Beanie Boo because everyone needs a special friend. Our Empower Me app will provide daily inspiration and motivation and when they watch our Empower Me podcast, they can talk back to us and voice their opinions or just listen if that is what they want to do. I would also like to mention the other members of the Leader-to-Later Team. Elizabeth Husband, Shailin Favors, Trinity Burney, who is watching us livestream from North Carolina, and Milton Person Jr. May words to young people experiencing mental health is, "Mental health is an important aspect of everyone's life as it refers to the state of your well-being. It affects what you do and how you do it. Your mental health is delicate. That's why when the pandemic hit, a lot of people's mental health decreased significantly." But even in this time of need, making sure your mental health needs are met is a challenging task. Even though daily struggles may seem like a hassle sometimes, I would like to let you know, each and every DPS student, that you are resilient and capable of doing great things. Not everyone can say that they lived through a pandemic and for that, I commend you for bouncing back, even though the world seems against us all in this present time. We have come to let you know that it is okay to talk about your mental health. And any students listening in, please do not be afraid to let a trusted adult know what is bothering you. You can also reach out to I'm a Star and we will point to resources that can help you. Just know that you are not alone. Now, I will dispute our Empower Me... Well, oh, Shailin, Shara and Shailin will now dispute our Empower Me toolkits. Thank you.
The toolbox is for all of the school board members, for Superintendent Diana Green, and also for Ms. Katrina because she's been so wonderful in helping our young people. And Marsha Pleasure also. We also have one for Dr. Dana Krisner. We have one for our Chief of Staff and our Chief of Schools. So can we give it to them here? Or, okay.
Congratulations and thank you to I'm a Star Foundation. This teacher is known for inspiring, challenging, and guiding his students with excellence. For our final presentation, we recognize John Wells, named the Northeast Florida Regional Aviation Teacher of the Year by Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. For eight years, Wells has served as a certified instructor within Embry-Riddle's Gates Aerospace Institute. This program allows students the chance to earn college credits while they're still in high school. His students are also able, pardon me, his students are also able to earn industry certifications. This includes with drones and also earning a remote pilot certifications. Each year, Embry-Riddle chooses an Instructor of the Year from each of its regions and we're told that choosing Mr. Wells was an easy decision. So much so, a regional manager tells us that she sends new instructors to his classroom so that they can model the culture he's created. He is described as a teacher who knows how to maintain a positive instructor classroom while still having fun. He quote inspires his students to see beyond their day and to see the possibilities ahead. What's more is that she says one of the hallmarks of his classroom is the inclusive environment. Students surprise him with gifts, decorate his door, bring him treats. Some even left distance learning so that they would not miss a day of his class. A mentor, a lifelong learner, and a leader, Embry-Riddle leader Say Wells is truly a shining star. And tonight, he is being presented with a coin of excellence. And with Wells this evening in the audience, we have Baldwin Principal Mike Townsend as well as several representatives from Embry-Riddle, Gates Aerospace Institute Regional Manager Buck Burney, and Instructor Shawna Hendricks. Please help us congratulate Mr. Wells for being named Northeast Florida Regional Aviation Teacher of the Year. This concludes this evening's presentations.
Excellent. Can we have one more huge round of applause for all of our amazing award recipients for this evening? So much to be excited about here in Duval County Public Schools. We're going to move now to the approval of the January 10, 2022 Agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the January 10, 2022 Agenda as submitted on December 22, 2021 with the following changes. Academic Services, Vistar Veterans Memorial Arena for 2022 commencement ceremonies attachment added. Academic Services, University of North Florida Arena for 2022 commencement ceremonies attachment added. Board Member Travel, item added. Human Resources Services Compensation Cabinet Position additions to the Senior Management Service Class, item withdrawn. Ask for a motion?
Second.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Hearing is seen, none. Call for your vote. By your action, you have approved and passed this item 7-0. Thank you. Now, moving on to the chair's report. I don't have a formal slide presentation for tonight, but I did want to pause before the superintendent gave her report and just say thank you. We're sort of at that halftime period. It's so fitting that the football season is ending, but our schools are at halftime and a lot has happened in the first half of this school year, a lot. And I just want to pause and along with my other board members, they can attest, we just want to say thank you. We're in your corner. We're here for you. Halftime is usually filled with bands and cheerleaders and concession stands. We don't have any of that, but we will be, we are your cheerleaders and your bands and we want to just recognize you in this moment. One of the quotes that I often used to hear when I was doing things in athletics was, a coach of mine used to say perseverance is not one long race, it's many short races, one after another. And there have been a lot of short races that we've been running and I just want to say thank you to the amazing staff who's out there listening, the employees, amazing superintendent in this cabinet, who've done just a tremendous job getting through every single one of our races, getting back up and running another race right afterwards. So I want to thank you for that. And all in all, I also want to say thank you to our students. Our students have dealt with a lot. We have some amazing I'm a Star students who basically are a shining example of what our students go through, but also what they're capable of. So I just want to say thank you in this halftime period. And as we move into the second half, I just want to say we're here. We're beside you. We're along behind you. We're pushing you ahead because that's what we're here to do. So thank you so much for that and I would be remiss if I didn't say... So thank you so much for that, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, "Go Dogs." And now I'll turn it over to Superintendent for her superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Widdley. My presentation, you know, I gave a presentation in December, and I thought that that was the end of my COVID update. It is not. So we will start with our update as it relates to COVID-19 for our school district and community. As you've recognized this slide, that was the slide we were using to indicate where were we as a community, whether we were low, moderate, or substantial. And as you can see, we are now in high with 1,434 cases per 100,000, as well as a rolling positivity rate of 34.5. As you can see, our cases, positive cases per week, we've surpassed where we were this time last year. Today, we hit our record high with 473 positive cases of COVID-19. I will say that if there's a silver lining is that many of our cases are not severe. However, the impact I will show in the slide presentation, even though the cases aren't severe, there is a major impact to our classes. Just as a reminder, we put up our COVID-19 mitigating strategies. Not going to go through every single one of these, but there is the bullet that says field trips are temporarily postponed. That is only for new field trips. Any field trips that were scheduled and we paid, students paid, we allowed those field trips to go forward. In many cases, those were not refundable, and therefore, we felt we needed to maintain that commitment. Capacity at athletics and performing arts events are reduced to 75%. We have, so far, we've had a number of athletic events, and we've not had an issue with the reduction to 75%. Employees are required to wear facial coverings when working directly with students or when they are unable to social distance. These next few slides are very important because there's a misunderstanding of the quarantine process. The CDC came out with new guidelines for quarantining. However, those guidelines only apply to employees in the state of Florida, and I'll explain on the next slide why. So our employees, if they test positive, they are, regardless of vaccination status, they are to stay home for five days. If they have no symptoms, or their symptoms are resolved after five days, they can leave the house, but they must continue to wear a mask around others for five additional days. And there is additional information. However, if they have a fever, they are to continue to stay home. Please note that for symptomatic, it is five days from the symptom onset, and for asymptomatic, it's five days from the test date. The Department of Health is the entity that tells individuals their quarantine period or how long they are required to remain in isolation. However, that is not the case for students because there is an executive order from the State Surgeon General that indicate that students are required to quarantine for 10 days. And that is the difference. Until the state addresses that executive order, the Department of Health has indicated they must maintain the 10-day quarantine for students. In the second little paragraph, if the student is experiencing any symptoms consistent with COVID-19 or have received a positive diagnostic test for COVID-19, they shall not attend school, school-sponsored activities, or be on school property until the student receives a negative diagnostic COVID-19 test and is asymptomatic, or 10 days have passed since the onset of symptoms or positive test result. The student has had no fever in 24 hours, and the student's other symptoms are improving. So we are continuing to get that message out to our families because they want to know why the teacher, employees only have five days. And it is because of the executive order that was written, that we had at the, I guess, October, from the State Surgeon General, is why we have to follow with 10 days. Hopefully soon, they will address that issue and become more in alignment with the rules under the CDC. As I stated, the silver lining is that we're finding that many of the cases, adults and students, are not severe. However, when employees are required to stay out for five days, that has a tremendous impact on getting substitutes and classes. In addition to our vacancies, we knew that we were, nationally, there's a teacher shortage. We continue to struggle with a teacher shortage. This slide actually shows not just our teachers, but also school-based support, school-based non-certified, our paraprofessionals, and district-based. So the teal line is school-based classroom vacancies. The red line is school-based support. The green line is school-based non-certified for paraprofessionals, and then district-based. When you put all of that together, we have over 1,000 vacancies in our district. That is utilizing all areas. Also, the length of the vacancies have been extensive. Fortunately, and I know it's hard for you to see this slide, but the future date, that's the very first little column there, the numbers are very small. It is positions that have remained vacant nine-plus weeks. As you can see, those bars are tall. And as we continue to move through this process of hiring, I could not be more proud of our HR department. I think Ms. Schultz and her team, sleep, eat, hiring. You know, you call her, first thing out of her mouth, "We are hiring, we have positions open." And I'm like, "I already have a position, Ms. Schultz." They are doing everything possible. We've actually seen our, you all approved a board agenda in December for K-12 Elevate, and it is working very nicely. We see, I've seen the teachers, they're interacting with students, students are interacting. And our two number-one vacancies, really, it's a tie for three. ESE, mathematics and science, especially secondary mathematics and science. And the instructors that are teaching our students, the vast majority of them are for math. And as we continue, we're seeing how this works the first couple of weeks. We may be engaging to help continue to try to fill as many vacancies as we possibly can. Again, if you talk about a silver lining, it's not all of our schools. The not-so-silver lining is for many, it's our struggling schools where the vast majority of those vacancies are located. So when you have vacancies added with what we're dealing with COVID-19 with the pandemic, it required us to pull out all stops and put all hands on deck. You may have read in today's news that we developed a plan before the beginning of the school coming back on January the 4th of district-level folks going out into the classroom, supporting schools. Everything that our schools need are not always, "Oh, substitute teachers." It's about cafeteria duty or breakfast duty. Dr. Krisner, today was her day, and she went out to Ed White, and Dr. Krisner put on 23,000 steps on her Apple Watch this morning because she was security. So she was everywhere. So this Friday is my day, and I'm pretty sure I'll be putting on a number of steps as well. But the great thing is Team Duval has stepped up. We've not had a single district-level individual complaint. They've all tried to figure out how to make their schedules work to find that balance. Today, Mr. Suarez, we had two of your executive directors in schools. Mr. Page, I don't know what school he went to today, but Mr. Page was out at a school. And who was the second?
Mr. Gondor. Mr. Tarek Gondor.
Yes. So it does not matter. We're using our certificated individuals as well as non-certificated individuals out there. I know that we've had a couple of board members who've agreed. Ms. Pearson got all of her work out, being a pre-K parent. You loved every moment. And I think Ms. Hershey, your middle school on Wednesday?
Wednesday, middle school.
So we are all in this together, and it sends a message that our teachers are not alone, and that no matter where people are working, no matter what their job is, everyone has made a sacrifice to be in our schools to support, to support our teachers and our principals and our students. We are continuing with our vaccine clinic. We had one Saturday. One of our sites had over 100 individuals, so we know that individuals are still taking advantage of our clinics. This is for January 8th and January 29th. We are also doing booster shots. As soon as we get, DOH gets clearance for booster shots for students, they will start adding that to the list so that students, if their families want them to have a booster shot, they'll be able to get it at one of our vaccine clinics. So that is my update on COVID-19 and our strategic focus on supporting our schools and continuing to make sure that our students can receive a high-quality education in their classrooms, whether it's with their regular teacher or teachers coming from the district to support them. This past week, we received our 2021 graduation rates. We are still very excited of the work that is continuing to happen in our high schools. The class of 2021 graduation rate was 89.6. I did share with a board member today that when you look at that on FSA, it rounds up to 90. So it's 90% technically. Last year, the class of 2020, it was 90.2. You can see our data for the last five years has continued, really, for the last 10 years, it has moved. But the class of 2017 was at 80.8, class of 2018, 85.1, class of 2019, 86.5, class of 2020, 90.2, and then last year's class was 89.6. Important to note that the class of 2020, the state waived all end-of-course exams. Therefore, students did not have to meet the testing requirement. And then the class of 2021, they were provided a waiver. They still had to show, working towards trying to get that either passing the FSA or a concordant score. And students and their families could apply for a waiver if they could show proof that the pandemic impacted their ability to graduate. And that is where you see the class of 2021. The class of 2022, I think a lot of people did not remember that this year's class, the concordant scores went up, the requirement from the Department of Education. So a student in the past, an SAT of a 430, was a passing concordant score. Now, it's up to 480, so it was a 50-point increase. We have reason to believe that the Department, the State Board of Education, is interested in looking at that, and hopefully, at their February meeting, they will revert back for one year. That's kind of where we're, if we're reading tea leaves, that this class may revert back to the requirements for the 20, the classes of the past, and that they will implement the new requirements in the year 2023. But hopefully, that will pass at the State Board meeting in February, and we will continue to watch that closely and hopefully have news for our students that are struggling at this point. When we look at our data over the last 10 or so years, bridging the gap to the cap, it wasn't just enough to have a high graduation rate. We needed to make sure all subgroups were graduating at high rates. And as you can see, from 2010, 11 to 2021, that gap has significantly closed. For African-American students are noted in green. Caucasian students, that is an interesting teal, and then Hispanic students, gold. And as you can see, in 2021, those bars are sitting right next to each other. For African-American students is at 88.2, Hispanic students, 89.7, Caucasian students, 89.9. To break that out even further, when we look at our overall graduation rate as it compares to the state of Florida, we have, since 2011, 12, have sort of lagged behind the state. And as you can see, in recent years, that gap is also starting to close. Whereas last year, we were actually 0.2% above the state. And right now, we're at 0.5 below the state. For African-American students' graduation rate since 2011, 12, Duval, in the beginning, was lagging, but since 2012, 13, African-American students in Duval have outperformed the state. Even today, even with our slight drop of 0.6, African-American students in 1920, we're in Duval, 88.8, the state of Florida, 86.6. This year, we are at 88.2, and the state of Florida is at 87.1. For Hispanic students' graduation rate, in recent years, our Hispanic students have started to outperform the state. Starting, if you look at 1819, Hispanic students in Duval, 87.5, the state, 85.9. 1920, Hispanic students, 89.9, the state of Florida, 89.5. And this year, this past year, Hispanic students, 89.7, and the state, 89.4. For our ELL students, those are English language learners, students that English is not their first language. Again, we have tended to outperform the state of Florida for ELL students. In 1920, when all the testing was waived, we were at 91.8, and the state was at 85.7. This year, this past school year, at 87.7 for Duval, and the state, 86.1. This is where we see our troubled, our area of weakness is for low SES graduation rate. That is, socioeconomic status, low socioeconomic status, are students of poverty. We still lag behind the state as it relates to students of poverty. It's important to note that students of poverty can also be in numbers of African-American students, Hispanic students, Caucasian students. This is measuring that students who would either be on free or reduced lunch for low SES. And we will continue to focus on our students as we do for all students. If a student is struggling to meet the graduation rate, it doesn't matter their ethnicity or their SES status. The GRIT team works with schools to ensure that we're trying to get every single student across the threshold. However, when we look at our students of poverty, many of these students are homeless by the education definition of homeless. It means they do not have a stable residence. They may move from one family to another family, or they move frequently. And we'll have to continue to find unique ways to support these students and their families to help get that graduation rate higher. One thing we are very proud of- One thing we are very proud of is our students with disability graduation rate. Again, for the past few years, we have outperformed the state. And 2018, 19, our students with disabilities was at 84.6, the state was at 80.6. In 1920, our students with disabilities at 87.2, the state was at 82.6. Again, even though we went down in students with disabilities, we still outperformed the state. The students with disabilities in 2021 was 84.6, and the state was at 82.3. We have a lot to be proud of with our graduation rate, but we know that we still have a lot of work to continue, even with the possibility of the score going back. That is only a one-year reprieve. We will have to continue to work with our ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade cohorts to continue that progression of supporting them to meet those higher graduation requirements. But I'd like to thank Mr. Corey Wright, who was unable to be here with us this evening, and his team for all that they do. And before Mr. Wright, it was Dr. Kelly Coker-Daniel, GRIT team, working with our high school principals, combing through that data, and not just combing through the data, but making sure that there were faces behind those data points, and that those faces, we needed to find what are the root causes for certain students not being successful, and how do we mitigate those root causes and support those students and help them meet graduation? Thank you. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Green, for that presentation. Appreciate that. Moving on, there are no department reports and no sales, SRTAC, or psych committee report for this evening, so that moves us to public comments. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. Board policy provides an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 p.m. Thank you for taking the time to address the board. Vice Chair, Kelly Coker-Daniel. How many cards do we have? And we can start us now.
Chairperson Willie, we have three speakers this evening. We'll start with Katie Hathaway, followed by Leah Kennely.
Happy New Year, Dr. Green and board members. It's so great to see you. My name is Katie Hathaway. I am a mom of two DCPS students. I want to start by thanking you for your unwavering leadership as we continue to navigate through this COVID pandemic and the impact that it is having on educators and our students. I'm here to also thank you for including the resolution for safe and secure storage of firearms on the agenda this evening. According to a Washington Post database, in 2021, we saw a spike in active gun violence on K through 12 campuses, which was the most in more than two decades, and approximately 34,000 students were exposed to gun violence last year. Last month, more than 100 members of Congress sent a letter to the U.S. Secretary of Education, urging his agency to raise awareness about secure gun storage by encouraging school districts to educate parents on how essential it is that they secure their firearms. The Be Smart campaign, which is supported by the National PTA, was launched to raise awareness that responsible gun storage can save children's lives. Be Smart emphasizes that it's an adult's responsibility to keep kids from accessing guns, and that every adult can play a role in keeping children, schools, and communities safe. Owning a gun is a personal decision, but secure storage is a public safety issue. Up to 80% of shooters on school grounds under the age of 18 obtain the gun they use from their home or from the home of a relative or friend. Sharing secure storage information with DCPS families is critical to help keep guns out of classrooms, to ensure the safety of students, educators, and our community. So I thank you again for including the resolution on the agenda and for your commitment to keeping students safe in and out of schools. I greatly appreciate your leadership. It's great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have Leah Kennely, followed by Cornell Oliver.
Good evening. My name is Leah Kennely. Thank you to the board for giving us this time to speak. I know how much you're juggling right now with COVID, and I appreciate this opportunity. I was a student in Duval County, and now I'm raising my two children here as well. I'm before you this evening as a voice of support for the Be Smart Safe Gun Storage Program, which we just heard about tonight. As a parent, it is terrifying seeing the rise in threats and actual gun violence incidents just in the last month. Nothing is more important than student safety, and we know you feel that way, too. We greatly appreciate your leadership by including this resolution on the agenda tonight and for taking every measure possible to keep children safe in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening to each and every last one of the board members. I'm actually going on, going to the state website for the Florida Department of Board Association, because I know that in every single function that is a part of the state, there's somebody that's a representation of Duval that sits on the Florida Board of Education Association. I'm trying to navigate, trying to find that direct person that sits on that board that represents us here in Duval County, because this is a high-stakes situation that we're in dealing with critical race theory. Because at this point in time, we've got a conversation of how we build together versus a conversation that divides us. I'm looking at two particular bills, one filed by Jason Fisher, ban on critical race theory, and then there's a bill I'm looking at that's called Stop the Woke Act. These are two dangerous conversations that we're going to be dealing with in Tallahassee. Now, I'm asking from the board, I don't really understand your functions as a body, but what I'm asking is an emergency resolution be sent to our Duval delegation and send those lobbyists that represent certain associations to go all out against these kind of policies that are not effective and are not policy in how you bring a community together. Because if I can tell you personally, from my standpoint, is that when Dr. King was in high school, when he was a child, they taught economics. They taught certain fashions of how you mobilize people in a community so that you can build upon progression. But as time has gone on, our system has stripped out a lot of things in our education system that suppress mobility to excel beyond regular views. Now, if we, now if the governor's given the opportunity to pass critical bills that is suppressing in nature, we're going to lose momentum, and that's not where I think our community really needs to be. So I'm asking that you put something on the agenda as an emergency resolution so that our Duval delegation can understand that as they go into session tomorrow and throughout the next two months, they know what opposition is in our community. I know the chairman can do this, call an emergency meeting and do it. You have that power and authority, but y'all have to have a census as a body to get it done. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. That concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman. Next, we will move on to comments from parent organizations. Welcome, Ms. Hawkins.
Good evening, School Board. Dr. Green, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. We are continuing to see a lot of our PTAs and PTSAs again getting started. We just reorganized Don Brewer. This month, we have reorganized Tiger Academy, and this week, we will be organizing, reorganizing Inglewood Elementary Thursday night. We've also had many schools contact us. Memberships are increasing again, which is a good sign, and we look forward to the memberships continuing to go up, and I think it has a lot to do with volunteers being able to get back into the schools and work with the students and the teachers. We have sent letters out to high schools with the information to students who are seniors this year to apply for one of DCC PTA's $500 scholarships. We hope to award five this year. Last year, along with the scholarships that we awarded, one student was a lucky winner of a 32-inch TV that they were able to take and use in their dorm room. And so we are having, the applications will be due to us by February the 1st. Our Reflections program was a big success this year, and we have many students who had submissions who have been awarded a recognition for DCC PTA, and that will be announced soon. And those submissions have been forwarded to the Reflections program of the state of Florida, and we're hoping that they will go on to national. Unfortunately, again this year, our Reflections program will have to be, the celebration will have to be virtual, but we hope that if you have the opportunity that you can join us this evening, that we do that, and we will send you that as soon as we have that date. DCC Student Leadership Academy held their second session this past Saturday. These students were recommended by their principals and their upper-class people. It was a big success this time. They're very interested. They have concerns that they have come to us about their learning, the proper way to go to Tallahassee, to advocate for education and different things that, of interest. And they even stress and interest this past time that even though we're only supposed to have one more session, it looks like we may be having a fourth, because they're enjoying us so much. Unfortunately, as we used to go to Tallahassee every year to take them over to the Capitol to let them meet some of our legislators, we won't be able to do that, but we will have a special program for them this year. On January the 30th through February the 1st, some of our DCC PTA board members will be attending this year's Florida LedgeCon. It's sponsored by the Florida PTA. It will be virtual. However, some of us, including myself, will be actually going to Tallahassee to attend this, and on Tuesday, I will be adjoining some of the other people from the Florida PTA going over to the Capitol to meet with some of our legislators about some of our concerns with education and some of the bills that will be coming forward this year. We have had several DCC board members help with process of selecting the Teacher of the Year, and that was very exciting for us. We look forward to the EDI awards that will be coming up, I believe, January the 22nd. We are really gearing up for a good second part of the school year, and as usual, we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hawkins, and welcome back. I know last time you were under the weather. It's great to have you back. Any other organizations, parent organizations? All right, seeing none. We don't have a Student Government Association report, and now we'll move on to comments from employee organizations. Any employee organization wishing to address the board this evening? All right, moving on to approval of minutes. That the Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in Agenda Item. September 14th, 2021 Subcommittee Meeting. October 19th, 2021 Board Workshop. November 8th, 2021 Board Member Meeting. November 10th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. Student Expulsion Hearing. November 17th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. December 7th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. Litigation Shade. December 9th, 2021 Board Workshop. December 15th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. Student Expulsion. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item 7-0. Approval of Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be, to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Seeing and hearing none, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Hershey, seconded by Board Member Anderson. By your actions, you have approved this item 7-0. Moving on to our public hearing, Academic Services, Modifications to the 2021-22 Student Progression Plan. That the Duval County School Board conduct a hearing of modifications to the 2021-22 Student Progression Plan. That the Duval County School Board, following the public hearing, approve the modifications to the 2021-22 Student Progression Plan. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Board Member Anderson. Is there any board members who wish to speak to this item? Seeing and hearing none, a call for your vote. By your action, you have passed this 7-0. Move on to the next item, Chief of Staff, Public Hearing and Vote, Revisions to Chapter 5, Board Policy. Dr. Green, can you read the recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to adopt the recommended addition of the following policy in School Board Manual, Chapter 5. Policy 5.09, School District Notifications of Parental Rights.
Thank you. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing none, closing the public meeting, public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, seconded by Board Member Hershey. Ask, is there, is there any board member who wishes to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing none, call for your vote. By your actions, you have approved this 7-0. Now on to Board Member Travel. That the Duval County School Board approve and confirm the travel listed below for official business of the district and that it complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. February 2nd through 4th, 2022, Tallahassee, Florida, FSBA 35th Annual Day in the Legislative Conference. Anderson, Coker, Hershey, Jones, Joyce, and Pearson. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing and seeing none, ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Coker, seconded by Board Member Hershey. Call for your vote. By your actions, you have approved this 7-0. On to Superintendent Travel. There is no Superintendent Travel for this board meeting. Now we're on to For the Record, and we will start with Board Member Anderson. Oh, look at that.
Thank you, Chairman Willie. I will be short this evening. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome back. I hope you all had a wonderful, restful break. I know that it has been a very challenging school year, and we have challenges ahead, so I hope that you are here with us and have gotten some rest. I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Nelson from Sable Palm. I am excited to celebrate him at the EDD Awards as one of the top-five finalists. It's the first time that I've had a top-five finalist from District 2, and so I'm really pumped, and I can't wait to celebrate you, Mr. Nelson. I want to share with you all a Betty White quote because she has left us here on Earth. She says, "There is no formula. Keep busy with your work and your life. Keep the person in your heart all the time. Replay the good times, be grateful for the years you had." And so, as we move into this new year and all that we have before us, hang in there, be grateful, find gratitude in the struggle, even though that is easier said than done. Thank you for serving our kids and for being a part of the Duval team, and thank you all for serving together and doing this hard work for our kids. That's it.
Thank you so much, Board Member Anderson. Next, we'll do Board Member Pearson.
Also, Happy New Year. It seems like it was more than 10 days ago that we had New Years. This is a busy month. I want to say thank you to Ms. Potis' pre-K class at San Jose Elementary and to Ms. O'Connell's CSS class at Southside Estates Elementary for letting me spend time with them as a substitute paraprofessional last week and then this week for the second class. I thoroughly enjoyed my time in pre-K and forgot how much I really love that age group, and I am learning an appreciation for what our CSS staff and CSS programs do and have just a deep appreciation for their commitment to students in those classes. With that said, the paraprofessional salary will be going up to $15 an hour starting soon, pending state approval, and we have a number of para vacancies throughout DCPS and a particular need in District 3 for bilingual staff. So, think about your neighbors, think about people you know. There is a parent academy class coming up, offering test prep sessions in January, February, and April for candidates who are interested in becoming a teacher's assistant. And if you're a parent, you receive this as a peach jar flyer, so you got an email with this last week. Think about, I've already forwarded it to some people. Think about who you might forward that flyer to who might be interested, and let's start filling these positions. Also, School Choice season is in full swing. I hope that you visited the School Choice Expo, the virtual expo on Saturday. I went to all of my schools booths and, and was blown away by their videos and their presentations and was just so proud of each of the schools. More information is available at dcps.duvalschools.org. Also, the expo information pages for each school, including neighborhood schools. So, School Choice Expo is not just for magnet programs. It's for you to explore your neighborhood school because choice includes neighborhood schools. I just want to throw that in there, are still available. And you can also visit the school websites for information about tours because many of our schools are offering tours if you'd like to check the school out in person. Also, I want to say thank you to Jacksonville Football Club and DCPS Athletics Director Tammy Tally for co-sponsoring a preseason soccer clinic for the girls' soccer teams at Dupont and Southside Middle Schools. This has been kind of a project of mine, working here for about a year, and we finally got it to happen right before we left for the break. And so, they were able to, we had coaches come out. The coaches from JFC were coaching the school coaches, and they were coaching the girls, taking them through drills, and through Ms. Tally's generosity, each girl was able to leave with her own soccer ball. So, over the break, they were able, they had drills to do and, and work they could do, but they had the ball to do it with. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing the fruit of that, and I just, I want to thank JFC for their partnership because it makes a huge difference to our students. The girls were very excited, the coaches are kind of boosted and re-energized from it, and I'm really looking forward to maybe seeing this expand and, and looking for different ways where we can utilize partnerships to bring more resources to our student athletes.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. We'll move on to Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. Dr. Green mentioned a lot of staff who had been in schools, and I know you're doing it from memory, Dr. Green, but I did want to give a shout out to Vicki Schultz, who was substitute teaching today, and she's here with us tonight. So, didn't, I wanted to thank her for, for her service and stepping up and stepping in to fill the gap as well. I have a few things. It's Dr. Green's favorite time of the year to be in District 7. She loves doing chat with the superintendent. So, this is my sixth year on the board, and I have done chat with the superintendent every year that I've been on the board. And last year, it was virtual. This year is going to be in-person. I do it in both city council districts. So, my first one is going to be Wednesday night at 6:15 at Mandarin Oaks Elementary in their media center, and if you can't make that, please join me for January 18th, which is the following Tuesday, at 6 o'clock at Bartram Springs Elementary. It's a great time for our community to come together. It's kind of like a town hall meeting. You learn, we talk specifically about schools in District 7, and you have an opportunity to be in a great, comfortable, casual setting with the superintendent, and Dr. Green does a great job at fielding questions and interacting with the community. So, I know she's looking forward to that, and I'm certain that my community is as well. I'd just like to graduate, gauge, congratulate Gage Holbrook, who was the Mandarin High swimmer who, who placed at the state level. So proud of him. And Wednesday, I'm going to be at Mandarin Middle School as a para. I have substituted before, but I have not ever filled the role as a para. So, being in middle school as a para, my daughter, who's an education major, said, "Mom, you don't want to do that." But I'm looking forward to it, and I think that this opportunity, it's great to kind of walk in somebody's shoes for a day, so I think that that's going to be a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to the, to the new year and what it has to bring.
Thank you, Board Member Hershey. Next, we'll have Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Happy New Year to everyone, and I would say, "Go Dogs," but I may get kicked for that. I can't, I just can't see it. I'm sorry.
You don't have to do that.
Last month, at a meeting, I forgot, I forgot to, to thank Dr. Green and her staff for the work they did after the Suzie Tarbent break-in where they destroyed a lot of equipment, had to move, I think, nine classes, relocate nine classes. But Region Superintendent Fan and Executive Director Johnson was there when I got there early that morning to see what was happening, and Dr. Green came out later and assured us that, and it's the faculty, that whatever was destroyed or lost or damaged would be replaced, and Dr. Green, I just want to thank you for that. I talked to Mrs. Adams, the principal, and she's still on medical leave, but she said that almost everything has been done and replaced. So, that was very tragic, and have teachers come into a building on a Monday and to have that kind of disruption in, in one of the schools that least can afford that type of disruption is, is a terrible way to start the week, but they, they have recovered and they're doing quite well. I just want to thank staff for that. Also, I had the pleasure to attend a scholarship signing from Nicholas Bell at Paxton School for Advanced Studies. He signed, and I want to also thank Mr. Soriaz for talking with him. He signed a full grant and aid to the Naval Academy on a football scholarship. Outstanding young man. I think he's made one B his entire school year, life, so I said, "Most students would be glad to make several." He's only made one. Outstanding young man, and he should be a good student athlete for the Naval Academy. And I told him I'd pull for them as long as I'm not playing the Florida Gators. And finally, kudos to Biltmore Elementary School. They partnered with the Giving Closet Project to make sure that the students had clothing, shoes, and toiletries for those students that really needed. It's in a high-needs neighborhood, Biltmore Elementary is, and I'm just glad that they partnered with that, and they had a ribbon-cutting last month that I was out of town, was able to attend, but the principal there is doing an outstanding job of working with that community and those students to make sure they have everything they need to be successful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Next, we have Board Member Joyce.
Chairman Willie, a couple of years ago, you went on a tour with me to Baldwin Middle Senior to tour the 6th through 12th grade model, and I don't know if you recall, a group of students, Xavier McGriff was one of the students who was a football player, one of my previous students that I love so much. He's a college football player now, but he walked us into Mr. Wells's class, who was the gentleman that was recognized tonight for Embry Riddle and the, yeah, the teacher there. And so, you actually have witnessed him in action. The wonderful thing about Mr. Wells is that every student in the school wants to take his class, and that's super exciting, and it's very rare that you have just students who have that much passion about a teacher and a subject. And so, I just want to thank him and thank the board for, you know, thank the district for recognizing him tonight, and then also thank you, Chairman Willie, for your report because that leads into, you know, the heavy load that the teachers are dealing with right From my recollection, being in the classroom, January is a hard month. Teaching is hard, and, you know, before COVID, you, you have the, you're the social emotional counselor for your students, and you're trying to get them academically ready for their FSA testing, and it's a lot of work, and it's very pressure-filled. And on top of that, we have the absenteeism and the pandemic and everything that has, that COVID has brought to our classrooms and our schools. And so, I appreciate your acknowledgement that you were here for our teachers. There's nothing more that, that I want to do as a board member is to support our teachers and recognize them because at the end of the day, it's really on their shoulders to get these kids where they need to be. And recognizing teachers, I'm excited to be a part of JPEF, the Teacher of the Year Awards on the 22nd, so I'm looking forward to that, but not just the Teacher of the Year and all of those that we've recognized, but every day, if you haven't been recognized as a teacher, know that I personally think about you and your classrooms, and I, I am really thinking about the work that you're doing and appreciate everything that you're struggling and going through right now. But January will be over, and we'll be looking forward to spring break, and just hang in there. Persevere, perseverance. I also want to recognize the Elijah, the state champion swimmer at Ed White. That's a big deal. Fun fact, I graduated from Ed White in 19, well, 1989. Let me give you my age. I turned 50 this year, and our graduating class was the first year that had a pool. So, they built the pool my first year, and now we're recognizing the state swimmer for that, so that's kind of fun. And maybe your stakeholder meetings are coming up, and I know our principals are getting ready, geared up to allow the community, our parents, the students to kind of understand where that school is right now in the mid-year, and it's, it's an important meeting. I know that there are other board members that have inquired about those meetings. Sometimes, they're all together, but the commitment for, I think, all of us to just make sure that we're engaged in those and understand your needs, and we'll try to be at, I will try to be at, as many as I can. That's all that I have tonight. Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and my husband said it was probably going to be a short meeting tonight because Daryl Willie was the chairman, and there's a national championship game, and I see the red and black, so, there we go.
Thank you, Board Member Joyce. Dr. Kelly Coker, name?
Well, as a Florida grad, football holds no meaning for me in this moment, but I know it will in the fall, and I know I'm joined by a lot of other Florida grads and Florida fans in this room, but we'll tolerate the bowtie from the board chair for this evening in terms of those colors. Let's see, I want to start out with some just genuine thank yous to Dr. Green, Mr. Soriaz, Tracy Pierce, and Dr. Crisner. Right before the holidays, we had a groundbreaking for a fine arts center at Fort Caroline Middle School, and I know a number of my board member colleagues were there. It was good to put a shovel in the ground and turn some dirt and see the drawings, and I will tell you, Arlington is a community that has struggled a little bit these last few years, and so many people, not just parents of those, the children that attend, but just so many people in the Arlington community are grateful that the school district is investing in Arlington in this manner. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I will say, Dr. Green, thank you for the teasing about the doodling. You took it well, and I'm grateful to you for that, but it was a wonderful event. Principal Wellington did an amazing job as well, so thank you to him for his leadership and making sure it all happened as well. I want to congratulate Crystal Lewis, who was one of the schools of excellence this evening. She was my one school in District 1. Ms. Lewis is just a veteran Duval County, you know, principal who has been high-performing everywhere she's gone, and I'm so grateful to her. I know that Board Member Pearson talked about the School Choice Expo like her. I was on there digitally, popping around, checking my schools out. Probably a highlight of my day was I stumbled upon the board chair electronically in one of the school choice informational sessions. We got to wave to one another on the screen. It was good, but as we thank our school principals and whatnot for all of their work and making sure they were there and doing such a great job, I'm sitting here looking at Assistant Superintendent Chawanda Peak. Thank you for a second year in a row of making that happen for our community. You are phenomenal. I know you will say it's all about your team, and your team did a great job as well, but without strong leadership, that wouldn't happen. So, thank you to you for a second year. It was a great event. Let's see, Terry Parker. I talk a lot about Terry Parker. I'm going to talk about Terry Parker again. Terry Parker, shortly before the holidays, invited me to their first open house in regards to their new early college program. I know I've said it before, I'm going to say it again. They're getting an early college program. If you go on the Terry Parker website, we have a countdown clock as to how many days before children start. We're very fired up. The open house was great. I will say, there were wonderful materials, prizes, and whatnot. Principal Evan Daniels over there just does a great job. I will say, he even handed out little caricatures of himself at the event. It was great. If you haven't seen those, I think he autographs them. That being said, they have another open house coming on January 13th. We'll show the caricature of Evan Daniels. Let's see, we have another open house on January 13th. We had some really high-performing students who came and checked us out shortly before December. We look forward to seeing some more children and their folks there on January 13th. And speaking of Terry Parker, I do have to brag, in a year where the district did go down somewhat in grad rate, my high school, Terry Parker, went up, 90.4 to 91.04, beating the district average. This is a record high for the Terry Parker community. Again, Arlington is a community that needs this, and I am just so blessed and grateful that the principal there, the school leaders, teachers, the students, and the parents came together to make that happen. So, congratulations to that entire community for that. That being said, I will turn it over to you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll close this out. We have just some incredible principals. I just think about all the principals that came up and the different communities that they get to sort of lead and, and guide, and it's just awesome to see. they get to sort of lead and guide, and it's just awesome to see. Couple of quick things. I want to recognize Brooklyn Reeves. She's the student app over at Bisken, who won the award from MLK essay contest. I think she got, you may have seen it on social media. Just excited about her ability to be able to present that in front of that huge MLK breakfast, which is really a great honor. Sure she'll remember that for a long time. Also, the Counselor of the Year, Mr. Nelson is in our district too, and I've seen him in action, and he just, he really just cares so deeply about that community and those students, and he truly does know all of them by name. I've seen him walk around the school. Once again, the Choice Fair was amazing. I got to wear my cool shirt. And Ms. Peak's wearing the black and red today, so I can just appreciate her even more tonight. She just knew I was going to shout her out. And then Ms. Bush, who came and did the presentation earlier about Springfield Middle School, some amazing things happening there. I actually am thinking about even inviting all of us. I know there's a Minecraft lab over there. I would love to get everybody in, at least if not all together, like, just to go see it because it is quite impressive, and students and parents alike are raving about it because their, students are going home telling their parents all about what's going on there. So, last couple of things. A point of personal privilege, I saw in the elevator that Dawn Gahan from the HR is getting ready to retire. Something like eight, nine years ago, one of my first roles here was like recruiting teachers, and I would sit in Dawn's office and get teachers into great placements for themselves. And actually, one of those teachers that we placed probably about eight years ago was up here, Mr. Darryl Edmonds, is now the principal of one of our elementary schools. So it's so just cool to see things come full circle. And I know she's getting ready to leave out, but just wanted to just recognize that in the moment and say thank you for her service and all the service that happens in moments like that. And lastly, "Go Dogs." And I don't know if you all know, I actually went to grad school at the University of Georgia, so I get it honestly. And we don't get these moments very often, so we're going to cherish them. But I do want to thank you for appeasing and bearing with me tonight. But at the end of the day, I thank you all for all the work that you do. And at that moment, I'll say, move to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Pearson, second by Board Member Joyce. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, all opposed? All right, we are adjourned.